How you doing?
You're great.
Looking dapper. You're leaving the meeting tonight?
I'm not, I'm here.
What do you think?
I think Russell's.
I am, I can do it from down here. I don't think it's likely where you sit at.
How are you?
We've got a little while to wait, it's ten after three, Russell.
Yeah, we're alright.
Yeah, we're waiting now.
Three hours.
Waiting on Everett?
You wanna start?
Yeah, we're not sure wherever he is, so we're having to delay too much.
He's probably in a tractor somewhere.
At that time of year?
You want me to switch or am I okay right here?
You're okay.
Always wanting one of these, especially when it says made in China. I'm gonna take this label off. That's gross. Alrighty, let's call this meeting to order of the April seventh, two thousand and fifteen Union County Planning Board. Got any additions or additions to the agenda tonight? Anybody?
No, sir.
Gonna get an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need to get approval of the April seventh and the April twenty first, two thousand and fourteen Board Minutes. I'm sorry, October seventh, October twenty first minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, preliminary plat review of Country Meadows, Section Two, subdivision Carolina Development Services LLC, containing fifteen point one five three acres with twelve lots located off of Watson Church Road, State Road sixteen forty-three, being within the New Salem Township area. Yes, sir.
It's a pretty straightforward subdivision. This is, actually, I will do a little presentation for you here. Drop that screen down. Do you guys see it on your screens at all?
Yeah, I'm not.
See it on the...
No.
No. There we go.
Here we go.
Lights, camera, action. Thank you.
So again, this is a RA forty zone tract, it's out on Watson Church Road. It's fifty, about approximately a little over fifteen acres. It's twelve lot subdivision. Actually, it's more than twelve lots, it's fifteen. The first three lots are already recorded. And I can show you that on aerial. These were done a while back. See those three lots there along the kind of the entrance road? So this is a tract that we're looking at here. So that's, that red outlines the tract we're looking at. Those three lots are already recorded. Those are done as a minor subdivision back years ago. So now they're coming in, getting twelve lots in the back. This is a, they're being accessed by a road that's gonna be constructed to NCDOT standards. They're septic tank lots, all of them are at least forty thousand square feet. Septic tank lots, they've had their perk test done on these lots and they all will perk for a conventional system. And they're, they've extended a water line back to serve all these, so it's on Union County Public Water. We've got all the approvals. There is a small stream crossing right here that we're, that required US Army Corps and North Carolina Division of Water Quality Approval. They got those approvals, because usually they look at the area of impact and it's just, it's a small road crossing. It's a small tributary, so it wasn't a huge permitting hurdle to overcome. So that was, that was approved. All their state approvals, all their county approvals are in place. We're coming to you because the ordinance, the ordinance that was in place when this subdivision started requires the Union County Planning Board to issue an approval on it. So again, we sent comments to the school, or sent comments to the schools several months ago. It's not a huge subdivision. There we go. It's not a huge subdivision, so there's not a huge impact to the schools. And with that, I'll just open up to any questions you guys have.
But Mike, down on the right side as you're coming in, what is gonna be there? Is that just open field?
I believe that's a different owner. We can... Yeah, that's owned by, that's owned by a different individual, so it's just, it's just an open field or it may be forested. Let me turn on the aerials, so you guys can take a look at that.
How, if they came in one of these days wanting to develop on the right side of that, can that be done with one acre tracks?
It could be, yes, sir.
And they just get the advantage of the road that's been put in?
Again, obviously, the property owner there that has created the roadway would have to agree to it. They don't just get the roadway by default.
Right.
Unless, of course, they turn the road over to NCDOT for a state maintained road. At that point, yes, they're gonna accept it by default.
Or they move it over a little bit where they can't get to it.
Which is the...
Yeah, I gotcha.
The plan is for this to be, this, NCDOT has reviewed the road profiles for this and they've approved them. So this, this is intended to be a state DOT maintained road. The right of way goes all the way to the property line. So this tract, if they ever wanted to develop it, could have access to that road.
Okay. Is it blacktop or gravel?
No, it'll be, it'll be asphalt, because it, it has to be constructed to DOT standards. And they, they require at least, I believe this is a fifty foot right of way. No, it's forty-five. That's the minimum. They, they require at least forty-five foot right of way. And then they have certain specifications for base and then they always require an asphalt top for it.
This kind of question. Up on Duncan Road, there's a piece that the guy put a gravel road in. They said it's to DOT standards. And then we're selling lots off of that.
How long ago was that?
I don't know, we're just, we're selling lots right now. And it, and it's again, it's a nine, I think it's wide, but it's gravel.
And it's on Duncan Road? Is, is that in Unionville?
No, it'd be up just off two eighteen. I don't know if it's in, I don't think it'd be in there though.
It'd be in Fairview, maybe?
Might be, but it's...
Yeah, there used to be a provision in the old UDO that...
I think that might be it.
The, the old provision, but we haven't had one of those in
Long time.
Long, long time. But those provisions actually allowed, if, if, I think it was ninety percent of the lots were at least four acres, the road, everything had to be constructed to DOT standards except that it did not have to have the asphalt. It could be gravel, but it still had to have the drainage, the right of way, ditches, it had to have all that stuff. The, the problem is that with those types of subdivisions, DOT will not, it's not constructed to DOT standards because DOT minimum, at a minimum, requires asphalt. So DOT will, will not take that over for maintenance. We don't allow those types of subdivisions in the county anymore. Number one, because most developers weren't using them anymore. I mean, it's just an old relic that was, that was left over. Two, it just, it sets you up for problems down the road in that you had a lot of gravel roads that had to be privately maintained. So my guess is that if it's up on two eighteen, it's probably, it's probably Fairview. But I mean, they, they may still allow those out in rural areas. I mean, that's not a, not a bad thing. But again, this is a pretty straightforward RA forty, minimum one acre lot subdivision.
Will they have to bring the plat back to us to approve?
Once you guys sign off on this, this allows them to go ahead and start construction. This, this is the major approval that, that, that they need. Once they get the road constructed or, or a surety put in place, like a letter of credit or a, you know, something like that for, for the road, then they can actually bring in the, the plats to us, we can sign them, they can record and start selling lots. But they either have to have the road in place and the water line in place or they have to have a letter of credit in place to ensure that that road or, and/or water line will be built. And our surety requirement's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the construction cost.
Wait, will the houses being built on this lot, will they complement the, the three current lots that are...
Those three current lots are undeveloped. Right, there, there's nothing there.
When they are developed, they're gonna need that access to that road then, right?
Yes, sir.
So they have to get permission to use that road or?
No, because it's the same developer.
Oh, okay.
It's the same developer. It's just been done in phase one and phase two.
Once that road crosses that stream, will that be a dead end or will it loop around or how will, any?
It culminates, it crosses the stream. So you can see kind of how this road is already sort of been cut in a little bit here. And that was primarily to serve those two, those two lots. It basically goes, crosses that stream, curves and culminates right there.
That will be culminating.
Mr. Attic, Chairman, if you'll accept, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're gonna get smart tonight, smarter.
As we indicated to the board previously when we were going through the adoption of the UDO, that inevitably there would be changes that we would have to come back to you. And, and here we are. We've identified some things that we feel need to be changed. Some are issues that came up when we were going through some plan review. Others are things that we just noted were maybe left out of the previous ordinance and we thought they were good ideas, so maybe we wanted to add them back in. So we will probably have some more changes at some point in the future. And in fact, one of the items that we'd like to discuss with you after this are some other things that we have some, some concerns about that we want to bring back in the future. So I will go ahead and start. This is very informal, so please stop me at any point, any point in time if you have questions. The page numbers may not one hundred percent align with your own documents and that is because when I made changes, sometimes it pushed things down. I'm gonna give you the page number that shows on my page that is the one that was sent out to you. But if you ever flip through your document, they may not align because of the changes on there. So starting with page five dash two, the text in, in red there, under section five point oh two oh, allowed uses. We wanted to clarify here that in residential areas, we don't allow more than one principal dwelling on a single lot. It is inferred if you go through the ordinance, but it's not clear. And those were regulations before, one principal dwelling on a lot. Now, that's not the same as if someone has a multifamily complex. Multifamily complex can be multiple principal buildings. What we're talking about are single family residential properties. Yes, sir?
What defines principal dwelling? Can that include an in-law apartment? Can that...
Principal dwelling would be the, the, the building that has the greatest square footage. So let's say you build a house and your house has twelve hundred square feet in it. At the time, that's called the principal dwelling, obviously. If you had a fairly large tract and you decided, well, listen, I want that to be an accessory dwelling, which we allow, and I want to build a larger dwelling unit on my property, you could because we allow an accessory dwelling unit to be on the property. But the principal unit has to be larger than the accessory dwelling unit. That is the case, so...
So if you went and then built a three thousand square foot house on that parcel, does the three thousand square foot house now become the principal dwelling?
That's correct.
And the twelve hundred square foot becomes an accessory?
That's correct, that's right.
What percentage greater than the accessory?
In here, we actually have a fifty percent requirement. So you really couldn't have an accessory dwelling unit that'd be like just under the size of it. That's kind of defeating the purpose. So if you had a two thousand square foot principal structure and a nineteen hundred square foot accessory, that's defeating the purpose. So it has to be fifty percent in size.
Is that, is that about anywhere?
In, in a later section, that's in there. So that, that clarifies again, that's one principal, principal unit on there. The next page is page five dash six. Got two things here. One is we're deleting some text. So anything you see yellow highlighted would strike through, that's text that's being requested to be removed. Anything that's in red is new or changed text. Under central water, I'm sorry, if I got the right one here? Yes, under central water and sewer, we're just clarifying that you have to have both, not one or the other. That was our requirement before. I'm not sure why we had one or the other in there, but for cluster developments, you must have both central water and central sewer. That's the whole reason for clustering. You're allowed to get smaller lot sizes under traditional zoning and that was part of our provisions before. Under streets, we've clarified here that all lots shall be served by newly created interior streets. Again, that was part of our previous ordinance. I'm not sure why it was left out, but we wanted to clarify that. And then also under cluster developments, we previously had standards that you had to provide some type of, of an amenity and that was left out. So we're, we're wanting to add that back in, that you have to have some kind of an amenity when you do a cluster development, whether it be a pool or clubhouse, whether it be bike pass, ball fields, you know, tot lots. It has to be some type of recreational amenity in the, in the property. And then we also define that that amenity has to be finished before seventy-five percent of the lots are permitted for occupancy. So those are some changes.
On that one real quick, perhaps just a numbered, right before basketball courts, inserting the word or. Just so, because I'm assuming you're saying you get, you can do either the neighborhood pool, clubhouse and/or one of the following?
Yes.
So if you put in, including but not limited to bike pass, ball fields, pocket, just put an or in front of the basketball courts and...
Okay. Yeah, we're not intending that you have to do multiple.
Right, but that, yeah, but that...
You can if they...
Well, and/or, you know, you do either the pool clubhouse or the pool or one of the other ones. And then if you just put in the or before the basketball courts, because you could say that, well, you gotta have bike paths, ball fields, multiple of those instead of just one of those.
Correct.
So that's what I just think.
Okay, no problem.
And we approve it with the change?
Absolutely.
That Chris is talking about, okay.
One of the things we, we noted down here on the bottom here in fifty point oh four oh is that we actually had indicated the wrong article for signs and the wrong article for landscaping. So we just changed those numbers back to the correct article numbers. They were flip-flopped, that said fifty-five, that said fifty. So we just had those changed. The next page, same thing, that was fifty, ten dash three, where those article numbers were flip-flopped. Where, so we're changing those back to what they should be, correct article number. Moving down to page twenty-five dash nine, this was an item that kind of came to our attention when we were looking at a firing range that the county will be putting in for the Sheriff's Department. And our previous ordinance basically allowed for any government use by Union County to be allowed in any zoning district. And that's the language that our attorneys wanted back in the ordinance. And so what you see here is the, the change is that we're, we're eliminating, basically, administration. We're not, we're saying any use that's allowed by Union County would be allowed in any zoning district. And we're following the language that was in the previous ordinance. The next change here, we wanted to clarify at the bottom here under Postal Service. Actually, local governments cannot regulate the US Postal Service. They can pretty much do what they want to do. So we're clarifying here, if this is a private facility, if someone's running a private facility, obviously, we can regulate that, but we can't not regulate the US federal government. Next page, which would be thirty dash five, this has to do with dependent care residences. Our, our previous ordinance allowed dependent care residences and we certainly allow that in, in here. Understand what a temporary dependent care residence is? That is something that's not intended to stay there permanently. That is someone that, that would like to bring in a mobile home to use for a, an ailing parent or some family member for a defined period of time while that person is, you know, unable to take care of themselves or until they pass away, if that were the case. We, we actually allow that by special use permit. But recently, the state legislature passed laws that allow for certain types of dependent care residences without any zoning controls whatsoever. Essentially, that particular law has to do with a certain model of, of a unit that's built right now, currently in Virginia. That's the only place it is constructed. That unit would be allowed to be brought in and used in any zoning district as a temporary dependent care facility. There are certain standards that they have to meet inside the general statutes. And what we did here is we just cited the general statutes that applies to that. So that in the case someone wants to fall under that, they certainly can, there are statute requirements. If they wish for a unit bigger than that, then they have to go through our process, which requires a special use permit. And that was one of the reasons we clarified that.
The issue I kind of have with this one is that this says that you would allow a person with a contagious disease?
Yep. That, actually, the general statutes are the same way. So we'd really be, the general statutes would allow the same thing. Yes, sir.
That, that last sentence there, Brian, a monetary hardship does not, should that be qualifying instead of quality?
Yes, it is, it should be. Thank you. It actually should be that.
So Brian, but getting back to that contagious...
Yes.
Can the county not put something in that's more restrictive than the state? I mean, can we...
Yeah, we could, sure, absolutely.
I mean, it just seems that if you've got somebody living at home, I mean, an elder parent or something with a contagious disease, I would think that that would be contrary to what we would want in our neighborhoods.
Recognize this, whether we allow it on, as far as the, the mobile home side of it, we can't prevent it under the general statute side of it. So what we can regulate is if someone comes in and says, I want to do a, a temporary unit that's bigger than the one that's allowed by general statutes. We can certainly regulate that nobody with a contagious disease could, could, could go in there. However, we cannot prevent that under the general statutes, because that is a general statute. We have no authority under that. So if someone were to fall into that category and they said, I'm gonna use the park model from Virginia, then they can. And we can't stop that. So just keep that in mind. If there's, you know, guys are uncomfortable, you know, certainly, we can, we can put that language in there for anything that's coming to us for a special use permit, but we cannot regulate what's allowed under the general statutes. That is line in the sand drawn there.
And, and just to clarify, what that's saying there is that's a reason to justify the need for separate quarters. So that's saying that, you know, if you've got a, a family member that needs to be cared for and they've got a contagious disease, that's a reason to justify having, you know, a place in a mobile home in, in the backyard for the family that lives in the house to, to, to care for them. So by eliminating contagious disease doesn't remove the person with the contagious disease from the, they can still live in the house.
Yeah, and then we can't stop that either.
Can't stop that at all.
But can, can you bring somebody onto the property? Say I've got my lot and my in-law comes down. You know, some family member comes down with something, they say, okay, I'm gonna move you onto my lot with, in a, in a trailer.
In, in a mobile home?
In a mobile home, I'm sorry.
As long as they go through the process and get a special use permit, yes, absolutely. They have to be a family member. It has to be someone, you know, it can't, it can't be you're just bringing someone off the street. You know, it does indicate this dependence of the family occupying the principal dwelling. You know, so you've got elderly family members or other dependents of the family. That doesn't necessarily mean a cousin. It really says family members, elderly family members or dependents of the family occupying the principal dwelling.
Does Health Service, would they have to, obviously, CDC or somebody would have to monitor that individual if it's a contagious disease or...
We issued these when, when I was, was the zoning administrator. We, we would deal with these on the board adjustment from time to time. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, this was an elderly family member who, because of their age, and they, some of these folks had dementia or some, you know, something like that, that the, the, the family could not, their house, they didn't have a big house. They couldn't, couldn't have that person living with them in the house because of bedroom space or, you know, kids. them in the house because of bedroom space or, you know, kids, but they would place a mobile home in the backyard for the mom or dad to live in. In my 10 years on the, as doing in zoning administrator position, we never had a case that was not an elderly parent. I can recall maybe one that was a dependent of, he was a son that had some mental, he was mentally handicapped, and he needed a place to live, and the father just didn't have a huge house, so they placed a mobile home in the backyard for him to live in. That was approved before my time, I mean, it was justified.
And that makes, that makes sense.
Probably 15 years ago.
But dementia or mental illness is not contagious. I mean, I'm thinking of somebody who's got a contagious disease that, you know, they're sitting out in their backyard in a mobile home, and you've got kids out there playing, you've got other people around, and nobody in the neighborhood may be aware that there's a contagious person in that home.
As Lee said, if the member who lived in the house had a contagious disease, you can't stop that either. So understand that, you know, if I own the home and I have a contagious disease and I'm not required, you know, CDC is not quarantining me or whatever, we can't prevent them from living in their own home in the neighborhood and have a contagious disease. Just keep, just remember that.
Now, we as realtors can't even ask questions.
You know, so I recognize your concern, but the reality is we don't have a lot of leeway in some of those things.
Wow, okay.
I also want to point out that this does not circumvent a neighborhood's own covenants and restrictions. If a neighborhood does not allow a mobile home on their property, then they can't get a special use permit to put that in there. We're not gonna, we're not gonna allow them to purposely create their own problems with the HOA. They, I mean, they can come to us and ask for that, the HOA can stop that if they want to. That's, now that's the HOA's responsibility, but it doesn't circumvent the HOA's rules. I want y'all to be aware of that. Okay, the next one had to do also with dependent care under 30-6. We wanted to make it clear that not more than one temporary dependent care residence is permitted on the property, so we wouldn't have just a conglomerations of units out there, it's just one, that's all you can add. Also, we wanted to clarify that you are allowed to have a manufactured home, and we have Class A, B, and C type manufactured homes. Again, we specified that. And then we also specified that the square footage cannot exceed the square footage of the principal dwelling. Understand, this is not the same as an accessory dwelling unit, that's permanent, this is temporary. So on a temporary basis, if you brought in a manufactured home and it was equal to the same size, then it could be allowed, because it's temporary, it's not permanent. Yes, sir.
How do we know when that, say someone passes, or how do we, how do we, or how you guys made aware of it so it is taken away at that point?
Your question.
Not permanently there.
The special use permits are issued on a six-month basis. So every six months, we actually have to request that they provide us with documentation that the situation is still needed, and then they can be given an extension. Or if they can't document it, then the permit is then revoked and the unit has to be removed. If they do not remove it, then it becomes a zoning violation, you have to go through the zoning violation process at that point.
Brian, before you go forward, can you just go back just a little bit?
Yes.
Right there. Okay, I just wanted to read that 060, the final part of it. It said the six months period for as long as, I couldn't see the other part of it.
Okay. And again, the intentions aren't that we wouldn't allow someone to stay there for, you know, a longer period of time. I think there was one lady who was for years, it was anticipated that she, her failing health and she wouldn't live for just a little bit, and there was years that she was living in the facility. That's fine, as long as she meets the requirements and the individual there still meets the requirements, then it can stay there. But the minute that that changes, then the unit has to be removed.
But they have to renew.
They do.
Permit every six.
Every six months, we have to determine whether or not they are still active and meet the requirements, and then, like I said, an extension can be given. All right. Next one is going to be on page 35-2. This has to do with the accessory dwelling units we were talking about. And this is where I talk about the size being no greater than 50% of the size of the principal dwelling. That was not specified before, we wanted to make that clear, that yes, you can have an accessory dwelling unit, but that unit cannot be greater than 50% of the size of the principal dwelling unit. And then, of course, there's reasons for that, you know, you understand this is a single-family residential piece of property, we're trying to keep it in that form. We also indicate here that the dwelling unit must also be built to North Carolina Building Code. In other words, a accessory dwelling unit cannot be a manufactured home, it has to be a built structure, built to North Carolina Building Code. So you couldn't bring in a mobile home and say, that's my accessory dwelling unit, that doesn't work, has to be built.
But, real quick, y'all, to clarify that, a North Carolina modular is considered, you know, that, so it can, it doesn't have to be stick-built.
We're not, when we say manufactured home, we mean a mobile home.
Right.
A mobile home is that, has wheels on it, and the wheels generally stay on it, I mean, sometimes they take them off. A module home can be brought in on wheels, but that's not how it's placed, it's actually, you put on a foundation, it is built to North Carolina Building Code. They don't look like single wides. They can look like a double wide, but they don't look like single wides. Okay. All right, good point, Russell. All right, next one here is page 40-3. This has to do with the exemptions for temporary uses. As you can see there on 40.050A, there are certain things that say, well, yard sales or garage sales can be called exempt from having to receive an actual permit. We've indicated some language in there that we had previously where any other temporary use that the administrator deems exempt from having to attain a permit. This list is not exhaustive, and we don't want to sit there and try to figure out every single thing that might be temporary in nature that really doesn't need necessarily a permit because it's temporary. So that's why that language is in there, the administrator would make that decision on that. Next one is, Article 50 has to do with signs, and that's page 50-5. One of the things that we were concerned about for signs within residential zoning districts is there was a lot of square footage that could be provided for signs, and that wasn't the intent. So we went in here and we suggested that we remove some of this language here that would allow signs that could be up to 150 square feet, that's a large sign, and really limited that to 32 square feet. This is a residential zoning district, it doesn't need to have a large sign, it's a marquee for the subdivision sign, there is a place where they get a little bit more square footage, but this is, this is not intended to be like a business that wants this huge sign out front. And that's why we're saying in residential areas, we need to regulate those areas.
No jumbotrons?
Yes. For non-residential uses, those were for residential uses, for non-residential uses, because remember, we do allow some home occupations, we allow some non-residential uses inside our residential zoning districts. Same thing, if we'd left the language as it is, someone could have had a sign 150 square feet. We really limited that to no taller than six feet in height and no greater than 40 square feet in area. And that's appropriate in a residential district. We also clarified for these freestanding signs, when someone builds one, the location, and that's this language here, the location has to be a certain distance away from any current or future right-ofways. It also has to have some type of ground covering around the sign, so some type of landscaping, and then the base of it has to have some, at least minimum height and minimum structure to the base of the sign. It's a monument sign, that's what it is. We added language for that. Any questions related to that?
Any requirements on lighting or lighted signs, so they can have lighted signs?
They can, yeah. Now, again, one of the things that we'll, we request is, of course, to look at a plan showing what they intend on lighting. What we don't want to do is create light pollution, but they can have lighted signs, yes.
Political signs?
Political signs are not regulated under this, they're freedom of speech. So, again, when it comes to campaign signs, the state has some guidelines, but political signs by default really aren't regulated. The next item is, of course, that's just a continuation of that, so the next item is still on signs, it's page 50-7, and this is where we get into freestanding signs that are commercial in nature, so commercial zoning districts. And under one here for maximum height, we realized that when we said freestanding signs in HC zoning district, that we had mistakenly would allow very tall signs on some other highway corridor zoning districts that are not on Highway 74. We intended 74 to have a little bit of higher signs, everywhere else their signs have to be a little bit lower to the ground. So we clarified there that freestanding signs that are in the Highway 74 corridor cannot exceed 25 feet in height. There are only 12, I know, I'm sorry, 15? I can't remember, hold on a second.
12.5.
It, I think it's 12 and a half feet in other places, they cannot get that high in other places. So anyway, that's some language there for highway corridor. We also indicate that they have to be set back from the current or soon public right-ofway and outside any site triangles. Site triangles are the areas that allow you to see when you're pulling out from a driveway or from a road connection, you're not supposed to have any visual barriers in there, so we clarify that. And also, we indicate that the sign must have, you know, minimum base height of 18 inches, so it has some base around it as well.
How big is the site triangles? Is there a standard?
They range, generally, I think they are 10 by 70, usually 10 foot wide, 70 feet long, and they're, they go down as they go, so the area gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
Sure.
And that's usually the size of them, but they can range depending on the roadway. If the roadway is a higher volume road, it can have a bigger site triangle. All right, next item is landscaping, that is on page 55-7. Here under the S1 profile, we realized that we did not have any minimum widths for the screening areas. Now, we may actually be coming back to you with some widths that are different, but for the meantime, we want to at least have a minimum 10-foot width for a screening or landscaping area. Our forester that works for the county is reviewing this, and he may give us some suggestions for some different widths for different types of barriers and screening and landscaping, but right now, we at least want to have a 10-foot minimum, because we had some folks come in and try to put it in about five feet. And generally, that, plants can't even live in that small of an area, they need a wider area to be able to survive. Same thing here in the next section, just a minimum width, 10 feet for all those screening areas. All right, that's it for that first section, let me pull up the next one. This has to do with our development standards and any of the regulations beyond development standards. So, on the development standards, page 60-1, infrastructure improvements required, we added sidewalks and trails, obviously, we do have the provision for trails in some places, and when we do, we have some standards that they have to meet when they build a trail, so we included that language. Also, we did not have specifications for street lights and street trees, so we wanted to add those specifications for when you put street lights and street trees in, how those are actually installed. Get down here to page 60-8. Under this area right here, this language here was very problematic for our legal department, it actually states that the maintenance agreement for roadways would have to be approved as the form by the county legal staff. They don't like that, they don't want to approve someone's form, so they asked that we remove that. Essentially, all we're doing is saying if someone's creating a private drive, they have to have a maintenance agreement, we don't really care what it says, that's their responsibility to provide it and record it, what it says is up to them. And we don't approve what it says and how it actually works. Also, in the street right-ofway here at the bottom, one of the things that we wanted to indicate is the right-ofway requirements, because we really didn't specify that before. So they have to dedicate at least 50% of the required right-ofway width, as shown in the table, there's a table below, which identifies different right-ofway widths. And then they also have to install sidewalks and multi-use paths or other things that are identified in our transportation plans. If it's identified in there, then the developer has to install those items. We also indicated that, you know, when a thoroughfare is shown, that the subdivision, they actually have to include, I don't remember what this is, the right-ofway must be platted and dedicated as shown on the table below. So thoroughfares that the project would connect to also have to have the appropriate right-ofway dedicated. We've indicated what those are for freeway or expressway, the minimum right-ofway is 350 feet, so half of that's 175. A major thoroughfare, minimum right-ofway is 100, half of that's 50. Minor, 70, half 35, and any other is 60 and half is 30. So really, that means if you have a subdivision or a commercial development, it's on one of those road types, then you have to dedicate the right-ofway that is necessary for that roadway. If that roadway is a minor, then you've got to dedicate enough right-ofway on your side to accommodate a 70-foot-wide right-ofway, which means for your half is 35 feet. From the center line of the road, 35 feet over, that area has to be dedicated as right-ofway. You can't build in it, you can't do any improvements in it, and all of your right-of, all of your setback lines have to be from that line.
Now, your question, on the freeway or expressway, say that the bypass does go in, and would that be 350 from the center of the?
175 from the center. 350 is the total, so 175 from the center.
I got you, okay.
Could you do any landscape screening in that right-ofway?
That would actually have to be approved by NC DOT. Yes, there can be some in there, but DOT is very particular about what they allow in their right-ofway. Most of the time, they don't like it in their right-ofway, they have been known to allow it, but they don't like stuff, they especially don't like big trees, because they consider them to be a danger. Outside the right-ofway is fine, if you want something in the right-ofway, it's probably going to be a shrub, to be honest with you.
What about existing plantation that?
If there's existing stuff out there, DOT has the authority to remove it, they generally don't unless it becomes a hazard. Let's say lightning strikes a tree and it's in the right-ofway, they're probably going to come and cut that tree down and get it out, so it doesn't cause any future problems. But generally, if it's there, they're gonna leave it alone, they may trim back some of the limbs and stuff of it to keep it out of the roadway, but they'll let it stay there. Next one is page 60-11. This has to do with sidewalks, curb, and gutter. Again, we just wanted to specify that if there are any standards in this ordinance that may be different than NC DOT standards, they have to comply with them. It's not just NC DOT standards, it's whatever standards are in the ordinance. And sometimes we do have standards that may be above and beyond NC DOT's requirements, they just have to comply with that. We also clarify that there are such things as collectors in here, and just indicated that for those types of streets, you know, you must have curb and gutter. and they must be built according to NC DOT or any other standards that may be within our regulations. Next item is on page sixty-twelve. This has to do with sidewalks. And it really just says that the developer may be required to install a sidewalk along the entire limits of their development adjacent to an existing public street. So, let's say you're building a subdivision along Highway two-eighteen, and we require a sidewalk on that section. You will have to build your side, you may have to build your sidewalk the entire limit of what you own on two-eighteen. In some cases, we will allow for right-of-way to be dedicated for the construction of the sidewalk if it's just not prudent for the sidewalk to be built at that point in time. It really just depends on what's going on. If you've got a property that's adjacent to a municipality, they've got sidewalks that are extending out, then you're probably going to want to make them connect to it. If they're in the middle of nowhere and there's nothing else out there, and our plan says sidewalks, more than likely, we're going to say just provide us the easement for sidewalk to be constructed at a future date because there may never be a sidewalk out there at any point in time.
Now, is that easement in addition to the NC DOT right-of-way?
That easement is actually outside of it. Yeah, it can't be inside of it. It's actually outside that right-of-way. Good question. Because sometimes, they want to put it in the right-of-way. DOT doesn't like that either.
Very, very good, though, to do the, give them the right-of-way and not make them put sidewalks in. Because they look stupid driving down the road out in the middle of nowhere and seeing sidewalks.
You know, it really comes to one of those things where there's got to be a reason for it, you know? And, and, and one of the things that we struggled with when we talked about it is there are certain situations where, let's say that this piece of property is close to a school. You may want to have them install the sidewalks in an effort to provide pedestrian connection to that school. But, if there's nothing around it, it just makes no sense sometimes for it to be put in place at that point in time.
Well, in that situation where the easement is available, is the developer required at some point to go back and put sidewalks in? Or do they have to put some contingency for sidewalks?
No, and unfortunately, we're not a stat, we're not set up to actually obtain escrow payments. Some jurisdictions require, like an escrow. If it says sidewalk and they don't require you to put the sidewalk in today, you can pay the money that it would cost to put the sidewalk in and they hold it. The county is not in that position. We don't build and we don't maintain sidewalks, whereas municipalities do. So, no, the answer would be we, we just, we don't require that. The easement would be all that's required.
So, can the county come back at a later date and tell you, now, there's more homes, there's more pedestrian traffic, we're requiring you as a developer to put sidewalks in, or does that become?
It really becomes really more of a private matter at that point in time. The easement is there. It could be constructed, but the county really can't force anyone to build the sidewalk at that point in time. We've accepted the improvements. We've accepted the easement. We really don't have the authority to go in and force the construction at that point.
But, an HOA or somebody could.
They could build it, absolutely.
It's already set in place to do it.
Yes, sir. So, it's available, but we can't force it to be constructed. Multi-use trails, this is actually specifications for how to build a multi-use trail. We had this in the previous ordinance. We, it got left out, so we've asked to add that back in. It talks about the width. It talks about the depth of, of your compacted gravel or whatever you use, whether it's an ABC stone or, or some other type of stone. It talks about, you know, how far away it has to be from other trees and obstacles. So, it gives you some standards for what you have to have as far as building any walking trails or, or trails for a project. Next item is street trees under page sixty-thirteen. Same thing, previous ordinance had standards for how close street trees would be to each other. And, again, you know, how many you would install. If you had corner lots, how that would work. We've just asked to put that, those requirements back into the ordinance for street trees. We've also identified the location, no greater than fifteen feet from the edge of the right-of-way. So, again, those trees are not inside of the right-of-way, but they can be no greater than fifteen feet away from the edge of the right-of-way. Street lights, same thing. We didn't have standards in this ordinance for streetlights. This was in our previous ordinance. We've gone back and said, listen, we do need to have some standards. They can be no taller than fifteen feet. They have to be decorative in, in style. They can be no greater than three hundred feet apart, but they're alternating. So, technically, there's one about every one-hundred-and-fifty feet. So, it's one on this side of the road, one on this side of the road, one on this side of the road. Those two have to be no greater than three hundred feet, but you've got one in between it on the other side of the road. Now, one thing it does do here is it gives us some flexibility in situations where street lighting may not be necessary. There may be a situation where you have an entrance roadway. There may be adjacent property owners. In fact, we have that right now that they may have some concerns about lighting causing problems in their yards. What we've asked to do is just put a light at the entrance and a light towards the end, but not necessarily anything in between causing light issues with those property owners. So, it gives us some flexibility where it makes sense where you, you don't necessarily need to have street lighting in those places.
Is there any kind of restrict, I'm sorry. Any kind of restrictions on illumination, you know, how bright they can be, how, I mean?
Good question. No. We, we have a lighting requirement in our ordinance for, say, parking lots and those kinds of things. When it comes to streetlights, as long as they don't exceed fifteen feet in height, there technically is not a foot candle standard for the streetlight. It's, it's, again, number one, it's generally internal to the subdivision. But, there are situations where there's a road and there's another subdivision right beside it, and there's no lots in between it. Those are situations where we're saying maybe we don't put side, streetlights in that area. But, internal where you actually have lots and you have streets, then you would have streetlights. But, there are no standards for the foot candles for those particular lights.
Is there any reason for that? I mean?
No. That's, the previous ordinance was that way. It had no standards for streetlights. In fact, it really didn't have standards for parking lots. We just added standards for parking lots now. So, I don't know why that was the case. I guess generally because when you're putting the streetlights in a subdivision that's brand-new, the property owners just understand, I got a streetlight, I guess.
There's no standards for directionality of the lights? I mean, that they've got to be shining?
Generally, it's an acorn. An acorn is a decorative, and the light pretty much goes everywhere. Sometimes, you'll see one that has a dome on it, so only the light goes out this way. But, on a true acorn, it goes up, it goes out, it goes everywhere. We don't have any standards that say it has to be one or the other. We just say decorative. Decorative means it, it obviously can't be one of those what they call a cobra head, which just sticks out and just shines straight down. It actually has some decorative form to it. Next item is under street and sidewalk requirements for unsubdivided developments. Unsubdivided developments are like if you had an apartment complex, if you had a commercial development that's not really subdividing, creating parcels. They're really doing a commercial, excuse me, multi-b buildings on a, on one parcel. This just indicates that the developer may be required to install sidewalks along the limits of their entire project on the public street. So, if you've got a public street, then they may have to install sidewalks along that entire public street for their project. Let's see, under that, it just talks about that sidewalks will serve residents and users. And the reason why it says users is because sometimes, undivided developments are not residential in nature, so it's just people who would use it. That's why we clarify that. Still in development standards, this has to do with stormwater. Inadvertently, the language in, in the stormwater section here on page sixty-eighteen actually would have required stormwater detention on every single property. And that's not the intention. Our past ordinance did not do that. The commissioners were not really supportive of changing our regulations to require stormwater detention on every single piece of property. So, we've removed language that kind of infers that you have to do stormwater on every single piece of property. Right now, we require stormwater detention on cluster developments only. So, when someone's doing a cluster, they have to provide stormwater detention for the cluster development. Any other type of development, they, they are not required to provide stormwater detention. A lot of them do, but they're not required to. So, just keep that in mind. And then, again, this here was language that also had to relate to, it was actually going to require stormwater detention on every single development. That was not the intention, so that's why that language was removed. All right, section one-hundred. This is page one-hundred-two. This talks about your side setbacks. One of the things that it was not clear on that if you had something other than a street, if you had another type of right-of-way, what would you measure from? Because there are other types of right-of-ways. There are railroad right-of-ways. There, you know, there are other public rights-of-way. So, we want to clarify here that your side setbacks and your rear setbacks have to be measured from an actual right-of-way. Regardless of whether it's a street, if it's a railroad right-of-way, it has to be measured from the railroad right-of-way line. We had a situation one time where there was a railroad right-of-way. The individual indicated that they owned to the center of the railroad. Well, that technically may be true because the railroad may not have owned the property fee simple. But, the intent wasn't that they could build almost up to the right-of-way line for the railroad. The intent was that that line is the line where you measure your setbacks from. But, the ordinance wasn't really clear to that effect. And so, they were right on top of the railroad line. And that's not what the intention is. The intention is a railroad line is the right-of-way line. That's what you should build from, just like you would treat a street. We've already required that the street right-of-way, that's where you measure from. It just made sense that we would clarify, you have to do that from your railroad as well or other right-of-way. Another thing that we discussed were setbacks. Inside of setbacks, we do allow for certain things to extend into the setback. So, buildings, no. But, if you had an awning, sometimes that can extend into a setback. Parking lots can, can extend into setbacks, and that's not uncommon. But, what we didn't have is provisions for how far those could extend into a setback. So, we clarified that if you are going to put a parking lot in a setback, which you can, it can't, it can't exceed more than twenty feet into the required setback. So, the required setback is forty feet, all you can do is use twenty feet of that, period. If the required setback is twenty feet, you can use twenty feet provided you can meet the other requirements of the ordinance like landscaping requirements or any of those other things. So, if there's a landscaping and a buffer requirement that's ten feet, then all you get to use is ten feet. You can't use all twenty. It really depends on what else you have to put in that area. But, it cannot go over twenty feet into the right, into the setback.
How would that work if you owned the property on both sides of the setback?
Wouldn't matter. The property line is the line that you measure from. They'd have to eliminate that property line. So, if you had a development that said, listen, I'm going to do a development for this entire piece of property, they would have to develop that piece of property as if it were one piece of property. And then, we could, of course, do away with that standard. But, if they were to say, well, I'm going to build this development here on this piece, but then I'm going to build this development on this piece, that line is the line, and that's where everything has to be measured from. Does that make sense?
Right. So, if a, if it's a single lot, and let's say there's, let's take a utility right-of-way that runs through the center of it.
Okay.
Then, you're, how do you, how do you measure? Since there really is no setback at that point. There is no lot line at that point.
How do you measure for the, for the right-of-way? As far as that goes? Well, again, you, you would establish what is the right-of-way because there is an established right-of-way width. So, generally, for a railroad, it's two-hundred feet. If it's some other type of railroad, you find out what that right-of-way is. You establish what the center line is. You measure from that point out. You have your surveyors who are, who are building the project delineate that line, and then they have to build their setbacks or anything off of that line. So, we require the developer to delineate it and then measure it and work from there.
And then, with parking or other things that are listed, they can actually encroach onto that setback?
Into the setback, not into the right-of-way.
Okay, not into the right-of-way.
Yeah, into the setback. So, setback is the distance away from the right-of-way line that buildings have to be built. So, if the right-of-way is two-hundred feet, they can't do anything in the right-of-way. If the setback's another twenty feet off of the right-of-way line, then they could conceivably build a parking lot in that twenty feet near the right-of-way line, but not into the right-of-way. Let's see. Next one has to do with definitions. And this is on page one-oh-five-two-five. Under central sewer, we want to clarify that it can be a county or municipality or other public entity, public utility, or a private utility. We don't restrict if someone is, is using central sewer if it's a private utility. There are private utilities. So, if someone's building a development and they want to use a private utility, they can. It doesn't have to be public. It can be private. And then, the same thing holds true underwater supply. Again, it can be any other public utility or a private utility. We're not restricting the use at that point in time. Now, I do want to clarify that where there is a public utility that is adjacent to the property, there are connection requirements within our ordinance. So, they don't get the option of saying, no, Union County, I'm not going to use your water. I'm going to do my own. If there's a water line that goes in front of their property, then they have to connect to it. If there's a sewer line and they're within a certain distance, they have to connect to that sewer. They don't get to make that decision. But, if they're not anywhere near any of those infrastructures, then they can use private facilities if they want to.
So, you will allow still put a package in as long as if they're wanting smaller lots.
Again, as long as that, number one, the utility commission approves it. Because we don't approve. It has to come from the state utility commission. They can do that. Yes, sir. All right, let's see. I think that is the last one. Now, these are the ones that we have suggested that we make changes to. Obviously, we're seeking your input on this. If you're comfortable with making a recommendation tonight, that's fine. If you're not, that's fine, too. The, the, this would go to the county commissioners at some point after the board gives a recommendation one way or the other. We would take it to the commissioners for a public hearing, and then, there would be a decision by them as far as any kind of changes. If there's anything in here that you see that you'd like for us to amend, then obviously, you know, we can certainly, you know, put those changes in there if that's what the board would like to see. But, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
So, I have a question. Someone, I don't remember who it was, raised a question under stormwater and site grading about the water runoff a minute ago, if I understood it correctly. Let's say, I know a subdivision, it explains it in here, or development pretty well. But, what if there is a existing subdivision and it's got maybe capability to have X number of more houses, you know, that lots are vacant on?
Okay.
And who makes sure that if a lot is developed that, and there is water runoff because of the way the land, the geography of the land, how, who, who checks that to make sure that builder directs that water away from the residents that he's building?
Right now, we have an engineer who works for the county who checks the general grading plans for all development in the county. Now, caveat by, by understanding that that doesn't mean that he is restricting anything related to the flow of water. His responsibility is just to review how the developer intends on having that. His responsibility is just to review how the developer intends on having that water flow. We can't require stormwater detention on anything other than cluster developments. So if it's a standard subdivision, let's say it's a three-hundred-lot standard subdivision, no clustering. He'll get a grading plan, and he'll see where that water is going, but he has no ability to stop that water. He can't say, "You're creating an impact on adjacent property owners. Sorry, you're gonna have to put a stormwater BMP detention in there to stop that." We don't have the regulations to do that. All he can say is, "Yes, I see where you're flowing your water from this point to this point. These pipes may be undersized to accommodate that. You need to change your pipe system." But other than that, he really can't restrict the flow of water. That would actually require the county to actually adopt stormwater regulations for the county as a whole. And the commissioners have not, they've not really been supportive of that concept. And I understand, it's a big undertaking. That's expensive. So we currently regulate only cluster developments at this point in time.
If a map comes in, and they have engineering on that map, and you're, you guys look at it, and you approve it, and I, my question is, who does go back out then when the, when the grading starts, and the roads are cut, and everything's done, to make sure the elevations are set properly, everything is done? Because it is an issue, you know, around the county. It is all over everywhere, but, you know, I guess, that, that's, I don't, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Sure.
And I know why the commissioners are saying what they're saying. But if I'm a developer, and I, and I bring a map to, to us, to you guys, and the commissioners, everybody approves it, it gets approved, and then they start cutting corners.
Who's the watchdog?
Yeah, yeah. And whether it be grading for drainage or multiple issues, the amount of gravel that goes in the road, the right-of, you know, how, who protects us ten years down the road? I guess is what I'm thinking.
That is an excellent question. When it comes to roadways, obviously, we rely on NC DOT to do inspections. The county does not inspect roadways, because we don't own or maintain roadways. We do have inspectors when it comes to the water and sewer side of it, because obviously the county will ultimately maintain most of the water and sewer systems that are put in developments. So there are county inspectors that will do some inspections on the water and sewer lines that are being put in. The stormwater, the engineer who reviews the plans will go out, and he'll make some general inspections, but understand that he does not necessarily do a full-blown review of every single drainage area and every single flow. We do require, I believe, ASBILs of the development. And the ASBILs are actually supposed to be surveyed and, and actually sealed to show that they meet what was put on the plans. That doesn't mean that the ASBILs are always accurate, but they're supposed to be. So if, if a plan shows that you're gonna have a drainage ditch, and it's gonna have a three-to-one slope, and it's gonna go from this point to this point, then the ASBILs should show exactly the same thing. They should have to be surveyed after the fact. They have to show that the slopes meet the requirements. And if they don't, then we can require them to go out there and make changes. But as far as we have the ability or the, or the resources to do those kinds of inspections, we don't.
I understand that the majority of the issues that we have at the county, stormwater runoff, are not from, from newer developments. When, when, when the things go in, when BMPs are put in, they work.
Right.
It's a breakdown, yeah.
Usually, those are maintenance issues, things that over time deteriorate. And what Brian's saying about stormwater being a huge undertaking is typically because a city that does it, or a county that does it, is going to actually, just like a road, accept and maintain those pods at the county level or at the city level. You've got ongoing maintenance, ongoing inspections. You've gotta hire staff to be able to go out, not just when it's finished to inspect it, but to go out, I don't know, is it yearly or?
Yeah, usually yearly.
Usually yearly, to each approved BMP, and make sure that it's still functioning properly. So it is a huge, huge undertaking.
So to answer your question, we, we really don't have the staff or the resources to do a true, you know, inspection. We do at least some general inspections. We do require ASBIL plans to be submitted, but that's as far as we currently go.
Because, you know, I think from the ASBIL side, I think it's, it's the right way to do it. I think it's your, like you say, right now, it's your only way to do it. But I think sometimes your developer, some of these people get a, a bad rap, and it's not always the person who's putting the money up is the, the guy that's cutting the corners. He's paying the contractor who he trusts, and that contractor cuts the corners.
Absolutely.
You know, and he don't even have a clue. You know, a lot of times, a guy puts up money, brings in something in, says, "I got a farm on it, develop it." Boom. And then find out later down the road that, and, and I guess, he's not qualified. You know, you gotta trust somebody.
Yep.
But, and I just wondered if you guys were that set of eyes that could oversee, to protect everybody involved?
Sure. I, in a perfect world, I would say yes, we'd love to do that. I think at some point in time, the county is going to be pushed into doing those kinds of things. I believe that in five to ten years, the county will own and maintain roadways. The state's getting out of that business, and I think that's coming. And I also believe that stormwater is coming to the county where we're going to have to do something with stormwater. Right now, the law doesn't require us to do it. So municipalities have to. We don't have to right now.
Question regarding to that, and I'm just, that question, guys, I know you everybody wants to go home, but what about the ditching and things? Or do we have a ditch department in the county that goes action, cuts ditches and cleans things out?
Yes, sir. We do not. Only DOT does that. So if there is a, is a roadside ditch, then they have crews periodically, which is rare, when I say periodically. They'll go out and they'll do some ditch restoration, do some cleanup, try to get the positive drainage flow in there, but the county does not have anyone that does that. What, before we go, I, I wanted to, I know it's not on here, but one of the items that we did identify, we just didn't have enough time to put it together for you, is we've, we've noted in the current regulations that mobile home parks, which we have several in the county, are currently allowed only in an R-eight zoning district. And, and so by default, what we have is a mobile home park, and it's designated sort of as R-eight. What we've realized in, in looking at that is, not on purpose, but we've created a situation if someone were to remove the mobile homes, they could literally put eight-thousand-square-foot lots in there and build houses. And that wasn't the intention. The intention was it to allow someone to circumvent the subdivision regulations and build on eight-thousand-square-foot lots. The intention was only to allow mobile home parks to remain where they are. So one of the things that we'd like to do is come back to you with a mobile home park zoning designation. So where we would define those areas, we'd call them a mobile home park. It would have a zoning designation for it. And then if they wanted, and it would obviously have like an R-forty underlying zoning capacity to it. So if they wanted to do more than that, they'd have to go through an appropriate subdivision regulation in order to do that. Because we, we realized that, you know, that was one of the holes in there when we were asked by an individual, "Well, if I removed all my mobile homes, could I put apartments in there?" Because apartments are allowed in R-eight. And we, we kinda had to say yes, because they currently, they are right now, but that wasn't the intention. So we're gonna come back to you with some, with some changed language for that. And then one other item we had some questions about were accessory structures. Currently, we limit an accessory structure in size to no greater, now I'm saying dwelling unit, structure. So like a garage or some type of accessory structure you use on your property. Currently, we, we limit that to no greater than the square footage of the house. Well, that's appropriate in some places. In residential developments with one-acre lots or less, you really don't wanna see some mammoth-sized garage in that zoning district. But that's not necessarily appropriate when you have large tracts of land that are more rural in nature. And we recognize that there may be situations where people may have five, ten, twenty acres, and they want a barn that's, maybe the barn's three-thousand-square-foot, and they've got a two-thousand-square-foot home on the property. I don't think there's a situations that we intended to restrict people. So we're gonna put together some proposed language for maybe a sliding scale. If you have bigger tracts of property, you can have larger accessory structures on those properties, because they're not creating an impact. You wouldn't want a three-thousand-square-foot garage on a one-acre lot next to you. You, you wouldn't want that. But on a five-acre lot, you probably wouldn't even see the scale of it. It wouldn't, it really wouldn't matter to you. So we're gonna try and come up with some language and, and bring that to you. Maybe in May, it just depends on how quickly we can get that provided.
When you say square footage of the house, is it square footage of the footprint, or square footage of the entire living space?
It actually says square footage. So we would interpret that to be the heated square footage of the, of the house. So if it's a two-thousand-square-foot, but it's one-thousand on the bottom and one-thousand on the top, we would interpret that to be the square footage heated of the structure, because it doesn't really say. At least, I'm not aware of it saying.
The way we've always, the way it's always interpreted is, is, I'll clarify that a little bit, we've always used total square footage. So heated, plus if you've got a garage, we'd allow somebody to count the square footage.
If they have an attached garage?
Right.
Okay. So if they had an attached garage, and that, you know, that's another five-hundred unheated, then we would even count that. So if you got a two-story, obviously, even though the footprint may be small, you've got square footage, that could actually be interpreted to be allowed to have a larger accessory unit on the property.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it make a little more sense to look at the area of the footprint of the home and base the accessory building off of that footprint?
That's certainly not a, not an issue. I mean, we certainly could look at that as being a requirement as well. What is your footprint?
You take a four-thousand-square-foot home.
But it may only have a two-thousand-square-foot footprint.
Right. And now you can say, "I've got a four-thousand-square-foot garage." It's gonna be twice the size of the house. It's still gonna be, I mean, yes, it's compliant, but it's, wouldn't want it next to my house.
Believe me, we understand. And that's why we were wrestling with this, because we recognized, in some situations, it's really not good to have these huge accessory structures. In other situations, someone's got twenty acres, really, why, why would we have an issue with a larger accessory unit on there?
Most of theirs are gonna have covenants that would cover that stuff.
You would hope that the developer created covenants and restrictions that would. Now, again, the county doesn't regulate that. That's up to the homeowners to do that. But you would hope there'd be some covenants and restrictions in there for that. Yes, sir?
Does staff need action from our board tonight to approve these revisions?
If the board is comfortable, yes, sir, we would love it. If you're not, we understand. But if you're comfortable with making a recommendation, we'd love it.
Can the chair accept a motion to approve the revisions as presented by staff tonight with the amendment that was made earlier? Chris?
Yeah, we got a second?
Make a motion.
I just had, I, I'm, I'm interested in, and I hate to prolong this for y'all, but the, the candle lights on the streetlights.
Okay.
You know, I'd be interested in seeing some of that, you know, whether there can be, you know, limitations that we did on parking lots, because you have some of these subdivisions, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna be driving by them, and there's gonna be a nice big old hue that's going on to the subdivision.
Sure.
You know, whether it's the candle power, whether, you know, there's a dome to reflect down, you know, I, I'm interested in seeing some of that. And I don't know how that would affect tonight.
If, if the, if the board is interested in us bringing back language specific to those standards, then my only, my only request would be at least allow us to put the standards in there for the separation of them, because we don't have that right now. And then we can bring back to you any of the illumination standards, and then you can consider that to be added to it. That would be my only request, was what, we, we do wanna be able to say, there should be at least these required separation standards for them.
Sure.
Roger, I think the other thing, too, the, the two changes that, that were made, do we need to, were there suspending errors?
No, when, when.
You guys caught those?
Yeah, and as you said, as, as amended, so again, those, that would incorporate that.
Yeah.
Just one more point of observation. When you're looking at the streetlights, perhaps looking at efficiency of those streetlights as well.
Okay.
Because I know that there's a lot of inefficient fixtures that are out there, and I think as we, you know, look, either from the county standpoint or from the subdevelop, subdivision standpoint, we may wanna look at how efficiently we're using those streetlights, and the type of fixtures that we're using that might be more inefficient.
And I, I think that also goes to the point of whether it has like a dome which directs light down, because I think light pollution is everything that goes up, which has no purpose, it serves no purpose. The light that's down is what you're looking for anyway. So those are certainly, and some jurisdictions have those standards, and I don't think it'd be difficult for us to add those kinds of requirements, that you have to have at least some dome that directs the light in a downward manner. I don't think that's difficult.
Okay.
I'll call a question, and I've got a question. All in favor of the motion? Question then, on the, on the shrubbery and the trees, and I totally am for all this, but how, do we, do we make the developer stand behind them for a certain period of time? Or do they just have to be put in?
No, there is a maintenance requirement within our ordinance, so they, they actually have to maintain them. Now, obviously, when the developer leaves the subdivision, then the maintenance now belongs to the HOA.
Right.
But as long as the developer is in control of the HOA, then the developer is responsible for maintenance of all of those items. Streetlights, street trees, any of those things, they're responsible for that. And we have maintenance requirements built into here.
I got you.
All right. Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Good progress.
Good job.
I don't know if Dick has got anything. You got anything else you need to?
All right. Can I get a motion? Amen, or done? Are we off, are we on?
I'll second, I'll second Roger for you, Richard.
All right, thank you.
Who was that first and second I missed?
I'm what, a journey?
Yeah, journey.
First and second.
The two young, smart guys.
So Brian, would you just take these sheets and just insert them in the book right here?
What we'll end up doing, because once it's approved, I have to go back in and remove language that actually, and it may change that, so we'll give you the sheets for you to have.
Okay.
We'll either A, give you a brand-new document, or B, we'll give you sheets to put in there. It just depends on to what extent we have to do.
Thank you very much.